Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board, Thursday, July 7, 2022. I'd like to get things started so we can keep tonight moving, so we'll take a roll call. To my left, Sherri Crook.
Here.
I see Mike Baptiste is missing at the moment. Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
And the Chair, Mike King, is here. Preliminary business. I'm going to skip over that for a second and go to the other business, the meeting minute approval for June 13. It's been noted that there were some errors in the minutes that need to be corrected that haven't been yet, so I'm going to make a motion that we pass on approving the minutes until the corrections are made. Move me.
I move that we defer the discussion of the minutes of the 6/13 meeting until our next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. Sherri Crook.
Aye.
Jane Gleason.
Aye.
Sam Corbett.
Aye.
Carl Schultz.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. As for our number one item on the list, 10-2291 and 101, Ferring Hill Road Site Plan Review, do you, I'm going to ask the applicant, do you want to give it five minutes until we have a full board for this?
If Mr. Baptiste is coming, I'd very much like him to be there.
Okay, I would make a motion that we grant a five-minute recess, or not recess, but delay in further discussion until Mike Baptiste hopefully gets here.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. Sherri.
Aye.
Jane.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Carl.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, so we'll give it five minutes. I know you're probably eager to have a full board tonight. I'm not playing on my phone either, I'm going to text Mike.
Mr. Parker, how are we at a question? I don't know why you did that. I don't know why.
So, having given a little bit of grace period for the board member that's missing, we will pick up continued public hearings, 12-2291 and 101, Ferring Hill Road Site Plan Review. Applicant Wareham MA3 LLC proposing ground-mounted solar energy generation facility, map 91 and 71, lots 1,000 and 1,007. Mr. Shanahan, if you want to...
Ever so briefly, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Joe Shanahan, Senior Project Developer for Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses, on behalf of the applicant. Let me first indicate, if I may, my disappointment that Mr. Baptiste is not here this evening. The report you are here to hear from Mr. Price, as you know, has been in the works for some nine months. The Planning Board, Horsley Witten, and our engineering consultant, Atlantic Design, have put a great amount of time into both the scope, the study, and the report. And I'm a little disappointed that the four, five members of the Board are not here to hear the Horsley Witten report this evening. That having been said, I, like you, are looking forward to hearing the results of that report from Mr. Price. If the Board has any current questions, I'd be glad to address them, but otherwise, I understood the sole purpose of this evening's meeting was to address that report.
Correct.
I would like to note, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, for those of you who have seen it, Mr. Schultz at the last meeting had asked me to follow up on a couple, actually a few matters, one of which was a question or comment raised with regard to PFAs at the site. I've submitted a formal response with regard to those comments. Second of all, there was some question with regard to historic archaeological or cultural resources at the site. We've submitted a report in response to those comments, and there was an allusion at one point to perhaps threatened and/or endangered species at the site, so we've followed up the full report on that subject matter also. Monique has been good enough to distribute those and put them on the website. So I have nothing else unless the Board has any questions.
Any questions while we move toward the report?
First, I'd like to thank the applicant for responding to my request, and the citizens have responded back and forth, so we have, we have a ton of stuff to read on that. I'm not prepared to discuss either side of that argument tonight, so I'd like more time to process. Monique did a great job of summarizing all of the materials that we've gotten, and there's a ton of stuff that we need to process, so that's still work in progress for me.
I would have to agree. I mean, I was still receiving emails with documents at five minutes to four, which is, you know, we've been down that road before too, so I agree with that 100%. But I am looking forward to hearing Mr. Price's explanation of that report, because I've read it multiple times and I still don't understand it.
How do you think I feel? I've read it $33,000 worth of time, and I still don't understand.
Well, yep, so...
I'll step aside, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Question, Mr. Chair. Should we have a policy about receiving material for an off-site meeting like this? We have a policy for Monday meetings, but we don't have anything official.
Oh, I think that policy should be standard for any meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was, I understand this, this particular project is, there's a lot of emotion and passion attached to it, and I get the flurry of information from both sides, but at five minutes to four today, I was shaking my head, going, you know, this isn't happening again, but it was.
All right, well, we have to take the input, but we're just not ready to process it.
Right, we're not, we're not going to act on it. Even if you, I got a chance to read a little bit of it, but even still, it's a quick glance, it doesn't do the information justice.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Price?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, pleasure to be here. I'm disappointed, though not surprised, to hear that that report, dense as it was, was a little difficult to digest. It may surprise you that we tried very hard to make it understandable, but let me try a little better today with this presentation, and then I'll also be available to answer questions, hopefully get to the bottom of this. Monique, if you, if you would, please. Okay, it's just the title, you can go to the next slide, please, Monique. All right, so what we're going to do this evening is go over the report that we've just been discussing, go over the recommendations that came out of that report, and then in the background, so some time has gone by since when this report was written and now, and there's been multiple conversations between us at Horsley Witten and the applicant's engineer, Atlantic, and they've made some design changes and some new calculations based on the recommendations from this report. So we'll talk about those, and then I believe that Rich from Atlantic will present some of the new design materials, so you can see how the project has changed as a result of the recommendations that have come out of this report. Next slide, please, Monique. So, as I mentioned, the design has changed, so what we're talking about now for the next probably half an hour is the proposed design at the time of the study, so as of this past spring. Picture of the design here showing the solar panels on the hill with the stormwater basins on both sides. The project at that time would convert approximately 26.8 acres of mature forest into this solar facility with approximately 7,300 solar panels covering about 20 acres. There were two stormwater detention basins planned, one on either side of the hill to manage stormwater runoff. Next, please, Monique. What we're doing here with this study, first off, let me be clear about this, is we are looking at groundwater impacts, so how does the groundwater, would the groundwater rise as a result of this proposed facility? Stormwater impact, so what kind of surface water flooding might occur as a result of this project? And really, that is it. This is not a formal regulatory review. You have Mr. Rowley here. When the project goes to CONCOM, it will also get reviewed for applicability with the state stormwater standards and with the town requirements. So we didn't look at every little detail of the stormwater design, we looked at the important parts of how the proposed design will work and how it might affect neighbors with regard to these two issues of groundwater and stormwater. We focused entirely on quantity again, so the flooding and rising groundwater, for the reason that significant water quality impacts from a project like this are very unlikely. You know, there, there, there are not, there's not a significant pollutant load as a result of this. The conversion of forests to meadow, while significant in many respects, is not really significant in terms of pollutant treatment and capacity and pollutant generation. So we were looking at water quantity, not water quality, and we weren't looking as directed by this Board. We were not looking at other factors like, you know, greenhouse gas emissions, how does a forest compare to the amount of carbon saved by your solar facility? We were not looking at impacts to habitat, and we were not looking at things like traffic and so forth. So strictly water quantity is what we're doing. Next slide, please, Monique. The scope of this water quantity study included a bunch of field investigations that we collaborated with Atlantic engineers on. This included drilling some wells, conducting test pits and percolation tests, and then using the information, the field data gathered during the study, to do modeling of stormwater and modeling of groundwater to try to understand these potential impacts that I just, just mentioned. The groundwater part was done using two different models. One is called MODFLOW, and that's a groundwater model, numerical groundwater model, that has been the industry standard for better than 40 years. We'll talk a little bit more detail about that later. And then we did a more simplified version of individual storm events using an equation that's referred to as the Hantush equation, because the gentleman that invented it in the 1960s was named Hantush. And then we used HydroCAD for the stormwater component, and that's also the industry standard for looking at stormwater runoff. Next, please, Monique. Just to get you a little bit more situated or remind you about the site, so I think, could you perhaps put your cursor right in the middle of those green oblong? So that's the site right there, right? So the two dark green oblongs are what it called, the USGS calls them thick till, the lighter greens surrounding it are thin till. So till, as I think many of you know, is a deposit, put down directly by the glaciers. So it's a highly compact mix of various sizes that tends to be highly impermeable. So the USGS classifies this hill as a drumlin, which it undoubtedly is. It has, it has those soil characteristics. As, as we learned during the drilling program, it does, one of the typical drumlin characteristics is a deep depth to bedrock, and that is not the case here. The depth to bedrock is quite shallow under, under this hill. Most of the hill is bedrock with just some till on top of it. Next slide, please, Monique. Just again, get you situated for where we're at and what we're thinking about. So this green is the site area proposed for clearing, the pink are the stormwater management basins, and then all these highlighted houses are the nearest neighbors that we were concerned about potential impacts to their properties. Also of note on this slide is running up and down where it says Marion Bike Path to Wareham next to Helen Street. So that's the currently abandoned railroad grade that is apparently proposed to become a bike path. I don't know where things stand in the planning process for that or how soon that might occur, but it's showing up on maps that way, anyway. Also of note, to the north and east, you see the wetland symbols on the map, and then that little bit of blue under the word parcels is the Wewy Antic River. So the, to the northeast side of the hill, you have a large wetland complex that is then graded into the Wewy Antic River. The significance of that is that water flowing in that direction has a pretty big spot to go to without impacting any neighbors, can go into these wetlands, be, be held back, and then get into the river and continue on its way. On the other side, however, water on the, on the south and west side of the hill is going, coming in very direct in close contact to all of these highlighted neighbors here on Helen Street in Ferring Hill. So that was our primary concern, was this, this southwest side of the hill and the impacts over there. Next, please, Monique. Eight test pits were dug on the site, shown here in the, the white dots next to the red call-out boxes, and three percolation tests were done from within these eight, eight test pits, the results of which were not surprising, as people who live here know that the depth to seasonal high groundwater is shallow, you know, between 20 inches and 40 inches below the surface to the seasonal high groundwater level throughout the site, and that soils encountered were compact till-like soils. The perk test that was attempted, or up at the top of the hill, the, the material was too dense to perk, and, and the test was abandoned. Down closer to Ferring Hill Road, the material was surprisingly a little more permeable. You'll see a rate of 13 minutes per inch along Ferring Hill Road, right there, yes, and then another, a rate of two minutes per inch over there. That's, that's quite a fast rate, so, and that's in the vicinity of one of the proposed detention basins. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Price, could you have Monique point to which pits were abandoned for the perk test? I missed that.
Oh, so, see, Test Pit Five, to your right a little bit, Monique. I lost your cursor. Go right. Keep going right, that one, right there.
Okay, was it just one that you had to abandon?
Yep.
Okay, so that, that says, very compacted there, that pit did not perk at all.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you. The others presumably did. I read the perk test, but I missed that one of them failed. Thank you.
Next, please. And then six monitoring wells were installed in general close proximity to the test pits, and the reason we did both test pits and monitoring wells is the monitoring wells go deeper. So the test pits are only as, you know, as far as the backhoe can reach, they're, you know, mostly less than 10 feet deep. The monitoring wells went all the way down into bedrock at, at all of these, these six places here, and the depths to bedrock ranged from, I believe, 16 feet up to something pushing 30 perhaps at the, at the bottom. We, you know, surveyed those ends so that we could create water table maps of the site, and we collected water level measurements manually four times. We went to the site four times and recorded the height of the water in each of these wells. And then we also put these automated water level recorders. So these are little computer instruments that sit inside the well, and they actually record how the water rises and falls, and then you pull them out at the end of the study, help them up to your computer, and you can see a record of, of water levels on a minute-by-minute basis over that time period. Next, please, Monique. This slide tells you everything that I just said before we got here, so, next slide, please. Do you have some good flow direction? Yes. Yep, that's, that's, we did a water table mapping based on the measurements in the well, we'll get to that in a moment. This is a picture of that automated water level recording device. It's tiny, you know, it's, it's three quarters of an inch in diameter and four inches long or something. We also compared, so we have a relatively short period of record, something on the order of three months of that we were looking at water levels here, but we, to, to broaden that length, we compared it to a USGS index well. So the US Geological Survey has a network of monitoring wells all over New England that they record water levels. Sometimes they just go once a month, sometimes they have instruments like that in them, and they actually post real-time data. So there's one up in Lakeville that has real-time data, so we correlated, so our three months of record on the site, we correlated with those same three months at the Lakeville well, and then we're able to extrapolate what we think the waters, water levels at the site would be doing historically over long periods of time based on that correlation, if that makes sense, and I'm happy to talk about that more when we get to that in a moment. Next, please, Monique. So these are the observed water levels, starting in early February and ending in the middle of April this past year, 2022. The, the green one at the top is that Lakeville USGS well that I mentioned, and the, so we didn't, we put largas in three of the wells, not all six, in three of the wells. So the gray and the orange are two wells up on the hill, and the blue is MW1, which is right down in that bottom corner where the high perk test, where the, where the fast perk test result was encountered. So that well, again, has more permeable soils than the rest of the site does, and you can see it in the data. So if you look at the green line and the blue line, they match pretty well. So the, the well in Lakeville is responding to precipitation and the general climate in the same fashion that MW1 down on, along Ferring Hill Road is responding. The other sites, the other two wells in the gray and the orange have a lot more up and down and a lot more variability, so there, when it rains, the till responds differently than the more permeable material does, so that's what we're seeing here. So it's just, again, just indicating that the, the core of the hill has got lower permeability material than does the, the outer edge of it along Ferring Hill Road. Next, please, Monique. And these are the water table maps Ken was asking me about, so there's two of them, they're just two different dates. February 9th on the left, January 26th on the right, and like all water table maps or even topographic maps that you would look at for going hiking or whatever, the contours are showing lines of equal elevation. So in this case, there, the 70 is the line where the groundwater elevation is 70, the 75 is where it's 75, et cetera, and groundwater flows with gravity from high points to low points, so it flows perpendicular to these contours. So from the 75, it would flow perpendicularly to the south and west through the 70 and the 65, and then vice versa, going the other way it would. So we have radial flow, which again is not a surprise for this, this till hill, so water flows out in all directions from the crest of the hill. And the only difference between those two things is that the water was a little higher in, in one of the, the dates than the other, but the pattern of flow is the same. So next, please, Monique.
So the elevations you got there, that's my... So the elevations you got there were based on depths of groundwater and not flow, you didn't do a peziometer or anything in the, in the well to get the flow direction?
So the way this works is the top, the plastic top of the monitoring well is surveyed, the elevation was surveyed by Atlantic, so we know what that elevation is, and then by measuring the depth down to water any time, then you know what the elevation of the water in the well is. So essentially, you subtract that depth to water measurement from the elevation of the top of the well, and that gets you the elevation of the water. So those numbers are actual elevation above sea level, so in the, it's called the NAVD-88, it's just the current survey datum that we use, it's essentially sea level. So these, these numbers are showing the elevation of the water above sea level, if that makes sense. Next, please, Monique. So, that's the end of the field data, so what did we do with this? So we, as I mentioned, we looked at groundwater impacts two ways. First, with this MODFLOW numerical groundwater model, and what MODFLOW is, it's, it's really remarkable. So the, the math that describes how groundwater flows from any one place to any, any other place is highly complicated calculus, and before, say, the 1970s, we had no way to do it other than to actually do that math to go from this particular spot to that particular spot, and that was all you could do. This computer model, see this block on the right? So you can divide your site up into a bunch of little cubes all over, so vertically and horizontally, a bunch of little cubes, and the computer model will do that complicated math from each cube to each of its adjacent neighbors, and then from each adjacent neighbor. So that's the, 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 that's So the way this works is the top, the plastic top of the monitoring well is surveyed. The elevation was surveyed by Atlantic, so we know what that elevation is. And then by measuring the depth down to water any time, you, then you know what the elevation of the water in the well is. So essentially, you subtract that depth-to-water measurement from the elevation of the top of the well, and that, and that gets you the elevation of the water. So those numbers are actual elevation above sea level. So in the, it's called the NAVD-88, it's just the current survey datum that we use, it's essentially sea level. So these, these numbers are showing the elevation of the water above sea level. If that makes sense. Next, please, Monique. So, that's the end of the field data, so what did we do with this? So we, as I mentioned, we looked at groundwater impacts two ways. First, with this modflow numerical groundwater model. And what modflow is, it's, it's really remarkable. So the, the math that describes how groundwater flows from any one place to any, any other place is highly complicated calculus. And before, say, the nineteen seventies, we had no way to do it other than to actually do that math to go from this particular spot to that particular spot, and that was all you could do. This computer model, see this block on the right? So you can divide your site up into a bunch of little cubes all over, so vertically and horizontally, a bunch of little cubes. And the computer model will do that complicated math from each cube to each of its adjacent neighbors, and then from each adjacent cube to each of its adjacent neighbors, and so on, and so on, and so on. So there's billions of calculations going on at the same time to produce what is the elevation of the groundwater at any one point at any given time. And that allows you to then do mapping and, and compute drawdown and so forth from it. It's, it's really an industry-changing tool that was developed in the nineteen eighties originally with computers. And interestingly, before computers, they did this by using like computer circuit boards. So they would build these elaborate boards with resistors and capacitors and transistors to simulate how ground, ground would move from one place to the other, and use these actual electric circuit boards to predict it. So this is how we've progressed in the science over forty or fifty years, so. Uh, next, please, Monique. So what do you get out of this? So this, this figure's a, a little complex, let me, let me try to explain. So the, the stuff that's colored is the active region of this groundwater model. So again, we're looking down from space at the ground, and you can see the yellow highlight is the site, and you can see each of the monitoring wells shown on there. And you can also see the parcels highlighted that we are, we're worried about along Fairing Hill Road and, and Helen Drive. The colors indicate what's called hydraulic conductivity, and that, that's essentially one of the, the properties of the subsurface that govern how quickly water can move. Hydraulic conductivity is a lot like permeability. But instead of a perk test going down, it's, it's, you know, lateral movement through the aquifer, how readily the water can be transmitted. The model has boundaries, right? So we've got the Weewee Antic River on the east, Cranberry Boggs to the south and west. So we need to, we need to tell the model something to get it going. So by giving it these elevations of the river, the rivers around it, and by telling it how much it rains, or recharge is rain essentially, rain falling on the surface, we allow the model to then take that information and predict what the water levels will be based on, you know, the, the boundaries and the properties, the hydraulic conductivity and other properties of the soil that we input. So I, I mentioned, we saw that cube. I mentioned that the, so this, this particular model has twenty vertical layers. So it's from top to bottom, it's sliced into twenty layers. So the, that, the point of that is it allows us to be very precise in the vertical movement of water through the system by having all this layering. And each of those little cells that the math is being done at is fifty feet by fifty feet covering this large area here. Um, next, please. Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, uh, through you to the, to Mr. Price. So the existing conditions model, we've had a lot of testimony from citizens about groundwater problems in their homes. And also, we know that Fairing Hill Road floods at the bay. Does this model support that, that, those observations?
So what this, this model is a, is a steady-state model. So what that means, it's a, it is showing average annual conditions. So it's not, it's not trying to simulate a flood event, it's just, overall, over, you know, a hundred years or a thousand years, what is the representative average elevation of the water? So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be showing that. But we do, I'm glad you mentioned that, because we do, this might be the next slide. Uh, this is just talking about the, the hydraulic conductivity properties that I mentioned, we can skip to the next here. So we calibrate, right? So in order to know that this model isn't just giving us gibberish, we, we get the results of it and compare it to what we measured in each of those six wells. We call it calibrating. So the table on the bottom, which might be a little hard to read, is showing what the model is predicting for, what the water table should be at each of the spots, at each of those six wells. Bless you. Versus what, what was actually measured in those wells. And I think we picked, yeah, the January twenty-sixth measurement date. And the reason for that is, based on comparison to that Lakeville well, that date was the most representative of average annual long-term conditions. So that number that's called residual on the far right is essentially the difference. How far, how far off is the model predicted number from the measured in the field number? And you can see the values are quite small, ranging from, the worst is, is close to a half a foot, but most of them are point oh six, point one, negative point two. So we, we have a, a really good match of, of existing conditions modeled to observed. Next, please, Monique. So, then you go to the proposed conditions model. So this comes down to, how does the site change when you cut down forest, replace it with meadow, with solar panels on top of it? And really what that is, is a change in the water budget. So there'll be same amount of rain falling from the sky, but that proportion of rain will change. Without the trees, do we call this transpiration, right? So the trees, the roots of the trees suck up water from underneath, and then the leaves evaporate it back into the sky. So it's, it's actually a, a very effective engine for moving water from the ground into the sky. So, so that's a, that goes away, a lot of it goes away, when the, the trees get cut down and turned into meadow. And overall, that's what happens is a balance of less transpiration and more runoff. That's why they need to build these stormwater detention basins, because that, because more runoff will get generated from the site under proposed conditions than, than currently occurs. So how do we define?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, through you to Neil.
Yes.
Neil, uh, we skipped from groundwater to flow. Can you connect these dots for me?
Yes, so this, this is a very, I'm glad you mentioned that, too, it's a very critical point, right? So we are, we are trying to evaluate how the proposed changes at the site will affect groundwater. But groundwater ultimately is derived from rain falling from the sky. So what we're looking at is how was that, how were the surface components of the hydrology changing in order to change how much water is going into the ground? And I'll try to explain, this is definitely the most complicated part of the whole report. And to be honest, this is one that we, our team at Horsley went and spent a lot of time talking about different ways to do it, trying different things before we came up with, with this approach. So there is a, as I mentioned at the beginning, there's a stormwater analysis done by the applicants engineer Atlantic, and we did want to look at that shortly, using this program called HydroCAD. And what, what that is doing is evaluating how much stormwater runoff occurs under different conditions. So we looked at how the, the HydroCAD runoff was going to change at the site as a result of going from the forest to the proposed conditions. And the analysis was done both by Atlantic and by us for the common storm events of two-year, ten-year, twenty-five-year, and hundred, hundred-year storm. When we looked at, we, we discounted the twenty-five and the hundred-year storms, because they're just such big events that they, they kind of blow everything out of the water. And, you know, as you mentioned, the site floods routinely, it's, it's not even really relevant to, to these long-term average conditions. But looking at the, 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 the two and the ten-year storms, we, the HydroCAD model showed approximately a seventy-five percent increase in runoff over the site averaged over, over, over that, on, on an average basis. But those events are rare. Two-year storms and ten-year storms, as the name indicates, don't happen all the time. So there has been research done on this, and based on a volumetric basis, the, the volume of rain that falls in those large events is about ten percent of the total volume that falls over from the accumulation of other small events. So we took that seventy-five percent number, discounted it down to ten percent, and that's how we get this seven-point-five percent of recharge from the previously wooded areas that's going to be now excess water that we have to deal with on the site. And it gets dealt with through the stormwater detention basins. So the, the whole site, we have a seven-point-five percent extra amount of rain and runoff from this whole site that then gets channeled to these detention basins and concentrated. So under the detention basins, you then get much more recharge occurring there because you've, you've put all this water into one place. And, and for this analysis, we're assuming it goes down. And this, I, I meant to say this earlier, this is a very important point. We, um, we looked at both groundwater and stormwater conservatively. So we looked at almost worst-case, reasonably conservative, so not fully worst-case, but like reasonably conservative conditions. And they're opposite. So for, for the groundwater component, we assumed that all of the water that goes into these detention basins is going to infiltrate into the ground. When we looked at flooding, we assumed that none of it was infiltrates, what's all going to run over the surface. So we've got like two impossible, um, they're directly opposite each other. But by looking at this, this two ways, we get the most conservative possible result for both of these assessments. So that's what happens here, with, with, you know, we, we've got this extra runoff that gets concentrated at the detention basins and creates more groundwater recharge under those detention basins. And that then has to flow out through the aquifer, and that's what makes the water table rise all around it. So, let me, maybe I'll pause there, is that, does that seem reasonably self-evident there, or?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, just, I understood your explanation of how you tried to adjust and, and pick your seven-point-five. And I understand that you discounted the twenty-five and the hundred-year storms, because you said they were catastrophic. What, and, and I understand why you did that. But my question would be, um, under the current conditions, a twenty-five or a hundred-year storm is catastrophic at one level. How much worse is it going to be?
So I, I don't, again, I don't, I don't think, from a groundwater standpoint, I don't think they matter. From a, from a surface water flooding, they matter a lot. And, and we, we have a whole analysis of that.
So we'll, we'll be able to see, so if we get a twenty-five, even though very rare,
Yeah.
uh, and clearly the worst case, how much worse is the impact going to be when the trees are gone?
Yeah, so we will.
You have a, you have a, that, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
To visualize the impact of all this water coming down the hill.
We are getting there, believe it or not.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just trying, trying to make sure that everyone understands the gory details of how, how this came to be. Next, please, Monique. So these are the results, right? So these, um, the blue, um, teal, light blue, aqua blue are the two detention basins, the blobs. And then you see the, the lines are the contours of the mound. So they're not elevation anymore, now we're talking about how much has the water risen from existing conditions to proposed on an average annual basis as a result of these changes of land cover at the site. And the numbers are very hard to read, but they're, they're, they're listed there in text on the right-hand side. So the maximum mound, again, the mound is that change, the mound is the rise of the water table. So the, the maximum mound is point oh six feet at thirty-two Helen Street, which is about three-quarters of an inch. So that's, you know, it's not nothing, but it's, it's not very much. Again, this is average annual condition. So now we, we go from this to looking at storms, so.
Mr. Chair? Sorry, uh, another question, Neil.
Yeah.
When you talk about three-quarters of an inch, three-quarters of an inch where?
So the groundwater on an average annual basis would increase by three-quarters of an inch. It'd be three-quarters of an inch higher at that street, at that location, thirty-two Helen Street. So the, underneath the, the ground, you're standing there, the water that's under the ground, maybe it's four feet under the ground now, it would become, you know, three feet, eleven and a quarter inches under the ground, instead of four feet under the ground.
And, uh, uh, do we have any idea what the impact on the residences themselves will be?
So we, we did not, or do, and do not have, um, like, design plans of individual septic systems and so forth. So I, I couldn't tell you exactly what the elevation is of each septic system. I, I will say that, that, that level, three-quarters of an inch change is less, you know, the, the, the plans aren't going to be that accurate. They go, you know what the elevations are of the septic system components, so it's, it's, it's minor. Next, please.
Do you have a question?
I just had one. Do, do, you said three, thirty-two Helen Street is the one that's most impacted based on the groundwater rise. Do we know what the current groundwater level at that location is now?
We do not, no.
We don't, so we don't know if it's four feet below, we don't know ten feet, or it could be two feet, for all we know.
Or, or it could be an inch, and now it's.
And now it's quarter of an inch.
Constantly wet.
Right.
That's an important thing to know, I would think.
Well, again, I think, I think the, the key infrastructure that we are going to be worried about are mostly septic systems and basements probably. And my opinion is that three-quarters of an inch is, is close to being, you know, it's, again, it's not nothing, but it's, it's very small.
Okay.
That's not, it's just not significant to, to be worrying about. So, but then we need to add on to this with storm events, because again, this is average, average annual.
Every day will be three-quarters of an inch.
Yeah, constantly, yeah. So the stormwater events were done using this, this Handtush equation. So this is, again, complicated math that was developed in the nineteen sixties by this gentleman, Mr. Handtush. And it has been, um, let's see, let's just, let's just go on to the next slide here. I think I have a, yeah. So the USGS has taken this math, this Handtush math, and they created a spreadsheet application to be, to analyze exactly the question that we're looking at here. So how will the groundwater react to stormwater inputs at an infiltration facility? So this image is a picture from the cover of, of the USGS publication. And it's interesting, this, 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 um, this illustrates the mound concept. So you can see to the right of the truck is an infiltration system. And you see those kind of teal lines, one of which looks like a bell curve, and then immediately under it is flat. So the, the flat would be the existing conditions, and the bell curve would be the mounded groundwater. And again, we're looking in cross-section now, right? So you're, it's a slice looking, looking through. So the, the mound is highest directly under the infiltration basin, and then it, it, it peters out moving laterally away. And how, the shape of that mound is dictated by the parameters of the aquifer that you're putting the water into. And it's, it's these, these key ones that I list here, that same hydraulic conductivity, which is essentially is permeability, aquifer thickness, so how, how thick is the aquifer that you're trying to put this stormwater into? If you think about, uh, it, almost like a hose or something, right? If, if you have a small hose, and you try to put a whole lot of water into a small hose, it's going to go through very fast. If you have a big giant pipe that's ten feet in diameter, and you put that same quantity, that same volume of water in it, it's a trickle com- coming out of the end. So the thickness of the aquifer matters because of its ability to accept the water that's being put into it. So a thin aquifer creates a bigger mound, a thick aquifer creates a smaller mound. Specific yield is the pore space in between each of the grains of sand. So it's the storage capacity that's there. And that's important, because that, before the water can actually rise up, you have to fill out each of those grains. So higher porosity gives you lower mounds, lower porosity gives you higher mounds. And then again, and how, how much, how much infiltration you're doing, and how long you're doing it for are the things that dictate the results of this. Next, please. So this is the results of that analysis, again, for each of these properties with the, and what we did is, so there are two, there are two detention basins, basin one and basin two. We independently computed the mound at each of these properties listed on the left for the, the infiltration at each of those basins, and then we added them together. So, so you've got the infiltration from basin one, from basin two, you essentially superimposed them to get the total, the total height. And that's the number on the right. And I've circled the highest one, which is point oh six-three. And if you remember from the prior slide, that point oh eight was about three-quarters of an inch, so this is less than three-quarters of an inch of, of rise from the hundred-year storm event. And this is even more conservative than that because of the fact that this, this, this model, it's, again, it's really a spreadsheet. Calling it a model is giving it a little more credit than it, than it deserves. So it doesn't know that, so for example, basin two, that's over on the northeast side, it doesn't know that there's a bedrock core in between it and those houses on, on Helen Street that is present, preventing that influence from actually getting over there. So it's overpredicting the influence at Helen Street from the mounding at, at basin two, because the model doesn't know that that bedrock is there. It assumes it's a flat, continuous surface. So this is just another, this is another conservative estimate of it. And then if you go to the next slide, we have, uh, combined it together. So you take that average annual from the modflow, you add the cumulative storm event from the Handtush, and you get these numbers on the far right, which are the total groundwater mound rise. mound rise during the 100-year event at each of these properties. And the numbers are, you know, vary, but the highest ones are .085, .08, .08. So again, a little less than an inch. And, you know, if you might, you might ask, well, what, how is the, how is the average annual and that the same? It's different properties. Some properties are affected more by the storm events than, and others are affected more by the, the average annual stuff. So they kind of even out here. So the some, the some conclusion of this is that we don't feel like groundwater mounding impacts are a significant concern resulting from this project with properly designed stormwater systems. And I say that because you'll, you'll, you'll see we have some recommendations coming out of our stormwater analysis, and the applicant has taken those recommendations and changed the design so that the current design will produce even less groundwater mounding than we've shown here. Next, please, Monique.
Question?
Yes, please.
Math was not my strongest subject in school, but it seems intuitively sort of hard to understand why the 100-year event and the shorter events would be roughly equivalent.
It's interesting. And I, I don't, I don't have a great answer for you, other than the fact that the 100-year event is, it's not really, because I've hinted this before, it's not really a groundwater event. It's a surface water flooding situation. And we're, we're not actually, I, this, I did neglect this, it's in the report, but I did neglect this, some explanation. The amount of water that's infiltrated at those basins, there is overflow during, during these larger events. So we're not, we're not, that's not being counted into the infiltration because that's a surface water impact that we're about to talk about next.
Okay.
Not a, not a groundwater impact.
Okay.
So, stormwater. As I mentioned, using this HydroCAD model, which is the industry standard for looking at, at stormwater, designing stormwater systems, et cetera. It was done for four storm events, 2-year, 10-year, 25, and 100. We started, so Atlantic, the applicant's engineer, made a HydroCAD model to do their initial design. We made some changes to it, we recommended changes, and we, we made our own model. Atlantic has since agreed and accepted these changes in their revised modeling. Those changes are increased precipitation following overall. So the numbers, the precipitation numbers for each of those storm events, there's new, new numbers that are not legal requirements as of yet, but they likely will soon be. So we've recommended those higher precipitation values be used here. And we did that, and they've also done that. So each storm event has a little more rainfalling than it did in the initial analysis. And then we, this, the, the way the stormwater regs work is you're trying to balance proposed conditions runoff versus existing conditions, not have any, any more runoff occurring under proposed conditions than existing. So the way we, we looked at this, and we thought that perhaps that the model as it was originally done had too much existing conditions runoff and too little proposed conditions runoff. So if you balance those together, then you get a balance. So our recommendations left the, the design that existed as of the spring being a little bit out of whack. So there, some changes had to be made to get the system back into balance and in compliance with the standards. So, next, please, Monique. So this, this, these changes in runoff, this is all about, HydroCAD uses terms for time of concentration and curve number that essentially define how quickly and readily stormwater can move across the land surface based on the land cover that's there. So we recommended that, under existing conditions, that the underbrush be changed from light underbrush to dense underbrush. And that, under proposed conditions, that the grass areas only be called fair rather than good. Now, changes have been made to the design that you'll hear about shortly that allow that proposed conditions to become good again. They've added more topsoil, and they've changed the spacing of the solar panels such that the meadow that will result, it could be characterized as good-conditioned meadow, and thus have less runoff than, than, than prior. Next, please. So this is showing those results. Let me just try to, I guess, all that really matters here is those last columns in gray that says change for flow and volume, and there are percentage increases for each of those storm events that are listed on the right, 2-year, 10-year, 25, 100. And, and the, the east and west wetland are the two stormwater basins, one on either side of the hill. So when you do those changes that I just described about the land cover and the more precipitation, you see that as, as the project was designed this past spring, we're estimating, you know, changes of something like 25 to 50% increases in the runoff flow rate and the total volume of runoff as a result of the proposed design. So that's not acceptable. So therefore, the, the project had to be redesigned in order to get those numbers back into whack so that you're not having a net increase.
Mr. King, through you to Mr. Price. So can you help me visualize what a 25% increase in the flow looks like in this case?
Um-
How much water are we talking about, you know?
So those numbers are in blue, so let's go take-
And how would I see it? If I'm standing at the bottom of the hill, what would that look like?
Oh, it would just, it would just look like diffuse water running through the woods, you know? Your feet would get wet, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like a river or anything like that.
It's not going to wash a house away, or knock me over, or-
Right, right.
Okay.
Nothing that dramatic, yeah.
So even 25% of a small number is still a small number.
Yeah.
25% of a big number is-
The regs require 0%.
No, no, I'm, I'm okay. I'm just trying to visualize what's happening over time here as we make these changes.
Right, right. Next, please. So we were concerned, so, so again, that stuff can, was all, can be addressed and was addressed as you'll hear later. And we also were concerned about where this water would actually go if, if these basins were to overflow, and, and some overflow was included at these larger storm events. So as I mentioned before, the, the northeast basin heads towards, through wetlands and to the Wuiwiantic with, I don't think any houses in, in the flow path, whereas the southwest ones have many houses nearby. And the overflow gets directed to that abandoned railroad grade. And there's essentially just two little ditches on, so the railroad grades may be a foot and a half higher than these two little ditches on the side of it. So any overflow water from that stormwater basin ends up in those ditches, and then would have to get across Fairing Hill Road through a tiny culvert that may or may not, we couldn't tell if it was clogged or how, what condition it might be in. So we were concerned about, about that, and that, that's an item that we'll talk more about now. Next, please, Monique. Here's a picture of said railroad grade with little drainage ditches on, on either side. Next, please. So the conclusions of all of the stormwater analysis is that the detention basins appear undersized, and that's why you had these percentage increases in flow. If the basins were bigger, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have those percentage increases in flow. We're not worried about overflows going to the north towards the Wuiwiantic. We are worried about overflows going to the south and west to that railroad grade. And we recommended more survey and further evaluation of that railroad grade and the culvert there to better assess that and include it in the modeling. Next, please.
Through you to Mr. Buckland. Mr. Buckland, who's responsible for maintaining the flow through that culvert? Is that the town's responsibility?
If it's within the redway, it's the town's responsibility, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So we, we relied on these, so there are, Massachusetts has some older standards governing solar facilities that are vague and don't, to be frank, don't, don't have a lot of teeth to them. Rhode Island has more updated and modern guidance, and we requested that the applicant consider that, those, those guidance, those Rhode Island guidance, even though clearly we're not relocated in Rhode Island, so it's not a, it's not a regulatory requirement. It was just a, a recommendation of good faith, better design standards to consider. And they did that. So, so again, so the, the way this next series of slides are going to work are, in blue at the top are the recommendations from the Horsie-Witten Report. And in brown, in italics at the bottom, is the response that had, we've already received to the, each of these recommendations. So in this case, Atlantic, the, the applicant's engineer, has ensured that there is more than 50% open space in between the rows of solar panels. So within, not just in the site itself, but within the, within the area just covered by solar panels, there is at least 50% of that area is open grass meadow, and less than 50% is actually covered by panel. So that meets one of the criteria from the Rhode Island guidance. We also, they also increased the depth of topsoil. I've forgotten the number. You'll probably hear in a moment from, from Atlantic, but I think it's six, under six inches now, and-
Six inches.
Six inches, yep. And we worked with them to come up with a new seeding mix that would be more robust. So two, actually, two seeding mixes. One for initial cover that would grow fast, and then a more permanent wildflower native mix that would grow well in this particular setting with, with solar panels and provide good cover and good retention of stormwater and runoff. Those things meet the requirements of, of Rhode Island. There is, I should mention, there is one Rhode Island's, the Rhode Island standards do say flat-out, don't, you know, try not to, or in fact, they say don't develop solar facilities on existing forested sites. So there's no way, I mean, this project, obviously, that, that can't, you can't have this project here and meet that. This isn't Rhode Island, so it's not a requirement, so I think that's sort of an understood compromise that has to be made. But outside of that, the, the changes that have been made then meet all of those Rhode Island guidance requirements. Next, please. We talked about the, the more rainfall, and they did that, and they, they changed the time of concentration and ground cover. So their HydroCAD model now matches what we recommend for, for both existing and proposed conditions. And they, in order to, once this was done, in order to make the mass, the math balance out so that you have no more runoff under proposed than existing, the two other, the two existing detention basins got bigger, and they added a third one as well. So there's more, there's, there's just more space holding back stormwater on the site now than there was before. Next, please. We just wanted to make sure that any overflows that do occur are not causing negative erosion. So these basins, they've, we call these things level spreaders. They're essentially just wide outlets that allow the flow to dissipate and go over riprap to break up the velocity. So those have been added. There's, there's, this side, and maybe Atlantic will address this later, is there is a little bit of discussion ongoing about if that has been sized appropriately. It's minor matter, but it might change. Some of the riprap might get a little bit bigger than is on the current plans that we've seen. Next, please. Oh, and so this kind of, as I was mentioning, that we were concerned primarily about runoff going to the south and west towards Helen Drive and Fairing Hill and that railroad grade. So we asked, and Atlantic was, was able to accommodate by adding a diversion trench that, and I'm sure that Atlantic will describe this shortly, that is, that essentially captures some of the runoff heading down towards that railroad grade and actually runs it all the way around the hill and brings it back to the other side to get it. So it now is going over towards the Wuiwiantic instead of over towards the area that we cared about. So you're, this is reducing the total volume of stormwater that's heading in the direction that we were concerned about. It's a, it's a big help. They also pulled that detention basin back a little further away from the railroad grade to create more space. Another big help. Next, please. We recommended that they go survey that, that culvert and the drainage ditch, and so that they can accurately include it in their HydroCAD model, and they have done that. Next, please. This last one, I don't, again, I don't know how, how to address this. So the modeling still shows that under existing conditions, that railroad grade gets underwater. It does now, it will under proposed, that's, that's not going to change. So people other than, maybe you guys, but someone not, not me needs to think about how that affects the design of the rail trail, if they want to be thinking about that or whatever. But I just wanted to point that out, that this, this rail trail is proposed in a, in a spot that the modeling is showing is currently wet and will continue to be wet. Next, Monique. So that's the end of my presentation, and in fact, this, this is the end of our entire current scope of work that we're, we're under contract to do. So I'll turn it over, maybe I'll answer questions first, and after, after the questions, we'll turn it over to Rich from Atlantic to talk about the, the new design that I've been giving you hints at along the way here. And the last thing I'll just add is that there are still, based on our most recent conversations, there's a few minor details, a few minor engineering details about the diversion trench and the outfalls from the detention basins to be worked out, but they're, they're minor, and I, I don't see any reason why those can't be readily accommodated. So, thank you all. Any more questions, I'd love to hear them.
I have just one quick one.
Yes.
You, you alluded to the fact that the rail trail will, is flooding and will continue to flood. Does this make the flooding worse, the same, to what extent?
The, I believe that, and Rich can talk a little bit about this, I believe it is exactly the same. There's no, no change from existing to proposed conditions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, thank you very much for your study. Thank you for the explanation. I'm going to ask you if my understanding of what you told me is correct. So based on your studies, based on your work with Atlantic and the proponent, if they, if they do the mitigations that, that you've been discussing and that we'll hear about, the net impact to the road surface and the residents, south and west, maybe some, but not material and not any significant risk, health, safety, or welfare?
That is correct. You know, the, the area, as you have said, is currently wet and will continue to be wet, but the change is unlikely to be significant.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, yeah. With the statement that you just made, do you have a confidence level that you would assign to that?
I knew this question was going to come. I, I don't have a number. Let me just, let me, let me try to say it in words, I, I guess, because I don't know how to, how to quantify it. We can never, you know, science and engineering is never perfect. We can't say with any certainty that these numbers are exactly right, that the groundwater mound will be exactly three-quarters of an inch or, or any of that, but the, the, you know, the full accumulation of evidence and studies, which are significant, as, as you saw, we did quite a bit of work and analysis here, and we tried to be conservative at just about every, every opportunity. Conservative to the point of almost being unreasonable in some regards. And we still have fairly small, minimal impacts. That makes me feel quite confident that the chance of high, significant impacts, much worse than existing conditions, resulting, if this project, again, if it is built as designed with all the controls and it's maintained, and all of that stuff is done appropriately, I think it is highly unlikely that we'll see, you know, really significant worse changes than based on, from current conditions to proposed.
Okay. I, just, full disclosure, I've spent thousands of dollars removing less than three-quarters of an inch from a basement, so I would not want to be in a position to have supported a project that ends up with, with our neighbors on Fairing Hill undergoing very significant costs as a result of this.
Right. This isn't really in the report, but it's, it's certainly something that be considered of, you know, is there, should there be some monitoring going on of water levels, you know, post-development to see, you know, what are, what are the changes that are being observed versus predicted? versus predicted? It can get tricky, right? Because the, you know, the specific events that happen are not necessarily those that were modeled, right? So it's hard to say what, well, we observed this on, you know, July 17th, 2028, that those events might not be exactly what was modeled, right? So it's hard to make a direct apples-to-apples comparison. But it's something that can be considered anyway. If people are still concerned, that there could be some monitoring to see, you know, what does actually happen here.
And I went back, I was not on the planning board at this time, but I read the, I think it was your proposal letter, and you characterized the work you were going to do as sort of preliminary and sort of to get a, I think it said, a screening type evaluation. Having done what you've done and presented what you did to us, is there any additional work that you wish you could do or would do that would increase your confidence level or the confidence level of the people in the community? Other than the, you mentioned some monitoring.
Yeah, yeah. So let me say this, that the, our initial scope of work was much smaller than the one that I just finished describing to you and was actually done. What I initially proposed was more of a staged progression of doing preliminary or initial work and then moving into more detailed field analyses and so forth as needed, rather than just kind of chomping it all off all at once. And the feedback we got from this board and the public was to just chomp it all off all at once. So we increased the scope, added all that field work, added more modeling and analyses and did a thorough analysis. It's not preliminary, it's thorough. I do not recommend, or I do not see the need for additional analyses at this point.
And you described that the work that you did with the monitoring wells, et cetera, was all onsite.
Yes.
Would have, would work offsite, similar work or different work, have assisted or, in your opinion, improved your results?
Yes. But that, I mean, that would be hard to do, that you would need a permission from all the different property owners and so forth. I mean, it could be, you know, it could be done. It would definitely, the more data is better. I will always say that. I'm happy to, more information would make the analyses better. That said, based on how these results have come out, I really, I don't expect a different result to come out. Doesn't mean it couldn't be done or shouldn't, but I would not expect a different result to come out even with more data.
Okay. Let's take a look. You really have answered a lot of the questions that I did have, and I thought that your presentation was very helpful. I did see in your report, the, there are houses that are like within 50 to 100 feet of the site. I am just taking a guess here and saying that this is not the first time you've done this.
No.
And you have a lot of experience doing this kind of analysis. How common is it in your experience for houses to be quite this close?
Houses can be, can be this close to any project, right? I mean, there's always the limit of a project. So I don't, I guess I don't know how to answer that, really.
Okay. For example, do you know what, is there a buffer in Rhode Island that is going?
There is not a buffer.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, can I just stand upon a question she asked concerning those questions?
Sure. Yeah, come on, Ford.
This price referring to ground, a lot of mounding, and particularly the Hellman property where you indicated it was minimal insignificant, but maybe as much as three quarters of an inch increase, to which you referred.
Right.
That modeling was done before we did all of the revisions.
Exactly.
To this plan, correct?
Correct.
Would it be fair to say that as a result of all of the revisions that we've agreed to incorporate, that three-quarter inch is going to decrease?
Correct.
So it's going to be less than three-quarters of an inch as a result of this? I just think that's important to know.
Yeah, and I did understand that, what I'm trying to wrap my mind around is, what is it? Is it zero or is it something above zero and how should we understand?
It's probably something above zero, in between zero and three-quarters of an inch. For the groundwater part, obviously, right?
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jane?
Sam, do you have anything? Sam?
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to extrapolate. I'm going to build on something that Ms. Quark asked you, saying you've done this before. And this is, and if you don't want to answer, you can't answer because hypotheticals are sometimes difficult to respond to. This is a solar development project, and you've calculated the impacts based on that. If this were a housing development project, would the characteristics significantly change? I'm not asking for pure numbers, but there would be an impact, obviously, right?
Right, right. So to be fair, I have never done an analysis such as this for a solar facility.
Oh, okay, okay.
I've done many such analyses for wastewater plants, stormwaters, housing developments, all of that type of thing, but I've never done one for a solar facility.
Well, now you've got one, so you.
Yeah.
So my question is, based on your experience, if this were a housing project, would we be seeing significantly different characteristics?
I don't think so. I mean, it all comes down to how the water cycle on the site will change from existing. It doesn't matter what you're evaluating.
The trees are going to come down, so the transpiration is, that's going away. Roofs are impervious.
Correct.
So they change the flow. Driveways are impervious, road surfaces are impervious. Would that?
I understand where you're going with this question now. So this is sort of an order of magnitude kind of question. So yes, I think the hydrologic changes from an average housing development of this size would be greater than the changes that are, that would occur from the solar facility. Because you wouldn't have greater than 50% meadow and open space.
Right, right.
As a result of this.
So I'm looking at land use and saying, okay, we've got 26 or 40 acres of property here. It's going to get, something's going to happen to it. Could be conservation, that's everybody's hope, could be the solar project, which we've got in your study on. It could be housing development. And so just trying to figure all these land use potentials. So land use in terms of the stormwater and runoff would likely have greater impact.
Correct.
Thank you.
From housing development, yeah.
I would think that at 50% lot coverage, a housing development would be more impact because they have foundations. It's not imperv, it's not.
That was sort of my.
Impervious soil underneath them.
Right, that was sort of my conclusion, but I wanted to have a comment.
Have him weigh in, yep. That's it? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You have a question? Yeah, I do.
No, you can't ask.
Your chairman?
Yes, sir.
You said a third basin was put in there. Did you look at the, or would you have a recommendation or an opinion on the interaction of the groundwater mounding underneath that third basin and the other basin?
Oh, the third, no. So we have not done, all of that analysis I just talked about was for the design, that was the previous design. We haven't redone anything based on the new. My opinion is that, you know, the impacts were so small before, all of the changes that have been, that are proposed will make them less, that there's no need to redo. I mean, we could, we, you know, it would be, we're not under scope or contract to do that, but we could redo all these analyses with the new design. But my opinion is that you're just going to, all you're going to get out of that is a quantification or prediction of a number that's less than it was before. And it won't be zero, but it's going to be somewhere, as we were just discussing, it'll be somewhere in between zero and what we had come up with before. Yeah.
Thank you for the work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Charlie, do you have anything to weigh in on our questions?
Just some questions basically for clarification.
Yeah.
For you, Mr. Chairman?
I looked at your study and I made a number of notes just to sort of clarify a few things. The testing that you did was from December 8th until about the 6th of, well, that's when the perk tests were done, early in the year when predominantly.
Field perk was done mostly like early December to early February.
Through, yeah, and into January at least. Modeling that you found in those test pits notwithstanding, would there have been a more optimum time to do those tests, in your view?
For identifying high groundwater?
Yeah.
Sure. The groundwater is generally higher in the spring than it is in the winter. I will say that based on, now that we have these wells in place, go out and do a round of measurements, not now, now we're heading into low season, but you could do it next spring.
Were there any evaluations of those monitoring wells done after April 18th or something like that?
No, that's the end of it, yeah.
So you've got a period between mid-April and the 1st of June, which in this general area is probably the area where the ground is the most saturated. It tends to taper off toward the end of June into July where we are now. But I'm wondering if maybe we might have gotten some additional data that would have provided somewhat increased elevations in groundwater, had we looked at those in mid-May, first part of June? And to touch on something that Sherry suggested, I had thought about that too, with the impacts of the surrounding neighbors being the majority of the concern that's been expressed to the planning board, I was wondering why some monitoring wells, perhaps one or two, might not have been put on the other side of Fairing Hill Road to where you would be able to intercept the water on that side? Because once the water has, if you can picture the water running downhill off that slope, it's going to run downhill off the slope and then sort of level out and flatten out as it reaches a plateau. And that southwest corner being a little more sandy, it's probably going to do that. I would have liked to have seen some of the monitoring expand beyond the limits of the property, just so that you had a better understanding of what is going on outside it, and to do the evaluation, at least the measurement within the wells, a little bit later in the year. When you talk about groundwater and what you observed, I know in a lot of the test results that you indicated that you found groundwater between 32 and 50 inches or whatever, which is that, would you call that a perched water table? Or is it the actual water table?
It is the actual water table.
You're looking at the actual water table?
Yeah.
Even though it would have in that easterly direction a relatively steep slope as it heads down toward the Willianic River?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the shallow depths to bedrock and the materials encountered, we didn't see, generally with a perched water table, you need some layer up high that's impermeable enough to hold the water up above it, and then underneath it, there's dry material. We didn't see anything like that.
All right. With respect to the before and after calculations that you did, notwithstanding what adjustments have been made in the plan by Atlantic Design to this point, but just looking at the characteristics that you looked at in the initial run-through, did you take into consideration the disturbance of the ground that would transpire between pre-construction conditions and post-construction conditions when that loam was spread?
We did not. So that, I would, that's.
What in your opinion would the change result in, if anything? Once you rip out the roots of a 18-inch pine, rub it through with a fork rake or whatever you do, smooth it out, and then put the loam on top, does that change the characteristics of that round so that the, not only the runoff, but the infiltration would change?
Once the site is established, so once the seed mix and the meadow has grown and that's, we're probably talking a couple of years post-construction for that to occur, I think that all of the analyses that we've done, we have done are fair and right for that condition. There will be a time period during construction where there will likely be more runoff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And so this comes down to, I believe this project needs to go, and you can condition it here as well, but through CONCOM and that stormwater review, hopefully there will be requirements for observations during construction and post-construction to ensure that there is not excess runoff and erosion occurring during that sensitive, every construct, and it doesn't matter if this is a solar project, every construction project is most sensitive during that disturbance period.
No question about that. That's where your operation and maintenance plan for pre-construction and post-construction conditions is important.
Right.
One other thing that was touched on, and I'll have to get back to it because it just escaped. Monique, could you put up figure nine? I think it's on page 33 of the report.
I-33 has no figure on it. The actual report, I guess you're talking, this, the actual report you're talking about?
Uh, wait a minute.
It's on figure eight, it's on 30, page 30.
Sorry. Yes. I had a question.
Down there?
Yes, I had a question concerning that one.
Yes.
The blue lines that are on there represent the mounding that occurs around the two infiltration basins that are proposed on the site prior to the third basin being put there.
Correct.
Right, okay. Is that a fair representation of the bulk of the potential for infiltration that will occur in this site post-construction?
I think it is. Again, with the, not during the construction, active construction disturbance period that we were just talking about, but once the site is stable and established, given the generally compact, low permeability soils and the ground cover, I think that most of the runoff will be conveyed to these detention basins.
To those two points, mainly.
Yeah, yeah. And I should point out that if that is not the case, if you're getting significant infiltration uphill, that would lower these results because you're not, it'd be less concentrated.
You're probably not with the soils that are there. It's probably going to hit, maybe go down a couple of feet and then go this way.
Exactly, yeah.
Hypothetical question, what is the potential, given these conditions you're looking at, for the area being starved for infiltration?
Oh, not having enough water to keep the meadows.
Not only the meadows, but maybe, we've heard testimony that people in some places still rely on local wells.
The overall, no, the groundwater level, so we're concerned about wells drying out as a result of groundwater decline, that won't happen. If anything, there's going to be a small increase in groundwater level, it's not a decrease. But I think I was hearing a point that I, to be honest, I hadn't really thought about, was the hydrology at the actual surface for the growing of plants up at the crest of this hill, might it be too dry for this meadow grass to establish and be healthy?
That is another point, in that a lot of this site is a south and southwest facing site on a slope, where the face of the slope is almost, not, it isn't almost, but it's more at right angles to the rays of the sun. It's going to be much more susceptible to drying out. So your analysis of using a fair determination for the curve number that you used in your calculations, I think is an appropriate one to do because of that condition. So unless that, unless that seed, once it's put in the ground, is kept moist, it's going to dry out. And if it dries out and you get a lot of runoff from that top surface, you're going to run up with erosion problems. So I think if this were to be approved, it's going to be, I think, very important that that surface be stabilized in such a. that that surface be stabilized in such a way that that grass doesn't dry out and just die and you end up with a bunch of weeds here and there and nothing else. So it will be important.
It's a valid point for this board to consider as you, you know, if and as you continue, you condition this project. But again, I would think the highest risk time would be during the first year or so after establishment as those plants are trying to develop roots. We, the seed mix that has been specified is one that is, you know, native, should be, do well in this environment, should be drought tolerant, all of that stuff. But the establishment period will be important.
Do you happen to recall what infiltration rate you used in your HydroCAD calculation?
It was zero under the detention basins. We assumed zero.
Zero?
Yeah.
What did you use for the rest of the site? Do you remember?
I don't, yeah.
Wasn't 8.27, was it?
No. Rich may be able to answer that question when he discusses the proposed design.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions at this point in time with respect to the report that's been done. I made a lot of notes, but some of the questions I had have been answered as a part of Neil's presentation. So I have not looked at any of the revised plans that have been submitted by Atlantic Design yet. I wanted to hear this presentation first to see what it said and how it might relate to what I am about to read when I go through that report that we now have for the revised plan. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, looks like there's no other questions from the board. So again, I'll thank you for your time and helping us understand that. And we'll move forward and look forward to hearing from the gentleman from Atlantic.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to have used so much of your time. I wasn't envisioning that.
That's right. It's important to understand this thoroughly.
Mr. Chairman, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to present by Atlantic tonight. But quite candidly, based on Mr. Price's presentation, I don't think it's necessary unless the board has any questions. We were primarily concerned that the matter of his recommendations and that we had addressed them and adopted them would be put on the record, and he obviously made that very clear. I think the points that we would like to underscore is that obviously a very thorough report was done with a number of recommendations. We have worked with Mr. Price and incorporated every recommendation he made into our revised site plan, even as he noted. When I first read the report and saw a recommendation based on Rhode Island guidance, the first thing I did is sent Mr. Buckland an email and said, "Hey, we're not in Rhode Island. We're going to play by Massachusetts rules." And he said, "Absolutely." But when we met with Mr. Price, I raised the issue with him and he said, "I made the recommendation. You don't have to follow the recommendation, but it'll make it a better project." And that's when we said, "Fine, we'll go by the Rhode Island guidance." And the other thing he noted this evening is, with regard to the HydroCAD calculations, we went with the soon-to-be-adopted, more restrictive, conservative calculations than what are currently on the books because, again, he recommended we do that. He said, "It's on the horizon. It'll make it a better project." So anything we've been asked to do, we've done it. We think it does make a better project. This was certainly an extended and detailed process to get to this point this evening, but I think everyone benefited from it. I think the project does, the board does, and the neighborhood does. So I appreciate your attention to the matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Can I ask questions? Even if Atlantic isn't going to present, I did have one or two questions.
Yeah, without a presentation, would the gentleman from Atlantic care to entertain some questions?
They're simple, so I don't--
Even if that, I wouldn't.
The first--
If you could, to identify yourself, please.
Good evening. Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers.
Thank you, Mr. Tabazinski. Through the chair to you. First, did the redesign reduce the number of panels?
Yes, it did, yes. Just to give you some numbers, the total project area was reduced by over six acres and it was representing about 24%. So that includes the total cleared area for the project from what the original design till now. So the fenced area was shrunk. The amount of clearing inside and outside the fence was shrunk down as well as the number of panels or the developed area inside the fence.
Thank you. Next question. The two detention basins on the north and east side, the new one and the one you were-- they're bigger now, but are they in the wetlands? Is CONCOM going to be impacted by those detention basins?
No, sir. Basically, the locations of those are outside, actually outside the 100-foot buffer zone. So we'll be, we do have some minimal amount of clearing that's going to be within the buffer zone to those wetlands there, but the plans show that we're on the very outskirts of that 100-foot buffer zone with not only those basins, but with the rest of the site.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, if I interpreted one of the end slides from Mr. Price correctly, regarding that culvert under Farring Hill Road, I believe, I read it, I could have misread it. Did you actually go and look at the flow through those culverts that they blocked? Was that, that was either a recommendation or a statement that you guys did that, or did I misread that?
Yeah, I mean, we had our survey crews go out there and actually locate the culverts and with the inverse, got the pipe size and everything and used that in the modeling of that trench that leads to them, of the railroad bed that leads to them. So it is all based on a survey.
Okay, so you've identified the culverts and how big, or not the culverts, the pipes.
Yes.
Do you know if they're clear or not? Or do we, is that something--
They could use some cleaning out, let's put it that way.
That would certainly improve everything, I think.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Just through you, Mr. Buckland, how do we, can we ask or recommend that? Or how do we, can we, we can't condition the applicant to do that, right?
You could condition the applicant to do that because that's a part of the function of the total drainage system that they're proposing to use.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate, though, that you ask municipal maintenance to do the work as well.
Okay. We'll follow up on that after. But it's certainly something that if this project should go forward--
Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. King, on behalf of the applicant, we will reach out to your municipal services and work hand in hand to make sure that gets done.
Good, good, okay. So if we move forward, certainly would improve everything, I think, if that culvert were clear, or not the culvert, the pipes were clear. Thank you. Those were my only questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, sir, for appearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we continue on with some public input, I would, would you mind if we took a two-minute break? Before we get into this, because I have a feeling we'll be here for a little bit. So I would make a motion to take a quick three, four-minute break before we continue on.
Seconded.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor? Sam? Carl?
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
It's a good thing you said yes. Chair says aye. I'll be right back.
I wasn't greedy. I only asked for three minutes, but. In a moment. Give me a second. So, thank you for the short break. I would take a motion that we reconvene this meeting.
So moved.
A motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All those in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye 500 to reconvene. At this point, we will open the meeting up to public comment. I will preface this with, we've been at this for a while as far as multiple meetings, tons of information for anybody either present or online joining us by Zoom. If you have new information that you would like to present, we are absolutely eager to hear it. We respectfully request that we don't re-present information that we've already seen or heard, whether it be in person here at the meetings or made public on the website as documents contained in this project. So, having said my little spiel, is there anybody that would like to? Ms. Hayes?
Annie Hayes, 52 Farmers Lane. I just spoke to Mr. Price and I showed him the abutting land that is mine right next to the wetlands of the project. And I am concerned about what Mr. Rowley said, which was lack of water, depending on the direction of the water that's moved offsite and into the trenches, the ditches, whatever. And the ferns on this property line are just as high, they're up to my waist, as the ones on my side. I have wetland in here that used to be a cranberry bog and the water goes down because they've covered the ridge with solar panels, so it's, you know, it's moving off the very ridge, the highest point, that water goes down in all directions. And it's quite a volume that keeps my meadows nourished and the forest below and then to the Wee Wee Antic. So, that's a concern. He said that would be a reason to monitor the water. The other monitoring might be of the wells. I know that there are several people on Farring Hill Road that are butters who had water infiltration in their basements, chronic dampness, that was not there before the Squirrel Hill project. And these people are sandwiched, if this project takes place, between two solar projects. So, that is really a consideration for these folks. And they spoke of it, they all came to the first number of meetings, which is about a year ago, if not more. And they're the folks whose comments didn't necessarily get recorded because they didn't write them. And as Mr. Baptiste said a couple of weeks ago, that really was a disservice to those people. And then they get discouraged because the former chair said, when Mr. Price asked at his interview if there were any public wells, and Richard Swenson said, no, it was all public water. So, I did the count. It was a rough count because it was just mainly the first circle. We're on the hill, the hill extends, and it was 211 households out of 259 had private wells. And we're very concerned, not only about the quantity of water and the changes in the water, the changes in sedimentation possibly from flooding. This is a picture of a neighbor that's right across on the ridge, across the railroad tracks, and this is the scour. She's an avid gardener and she's been trying to have soil hold for years. And every time the intense rain comes, which it comes, what, maybe four or five times a year, this is what she gets. So, the scour is right there, and unless the meadow is maintained, and Mr. Price and I both concur, we've never seen a well-maintained solar field meadow, even on flat land, it's not done, it's hard to do. So, unless that soil is gardened, maintained, with the droughts that we're getting, we're in a drought now, and the severe rains, we had a drought last winter during these very months, last winter. I didn't look up. The reason I looked up last year was because that's when Scott Goddard's crew looked for vernal pool. And the narrative said, didn't see ponding, didn't hear peepers. And the rainfall was .5 inches, when the annual is usually in those months, February, March, and April, six inches, five to six inches. So, I called Mr. Goddard and I said I was confused, that I was interested because I have potential vernal pools on my property, and I would say they benefit from the water off of Farring Hill very much. Mr. Goddard said, I said, he said, well, you just signed up for that period of time. And I said, well, I'm confused. I thought it was, you know, it had to do with the spring rains and peepers. He said, oh, it's highly dependent on the warm spring rains. I didn't tell him that I was really testing the whole project with looking for vernal pools in a drought. So, then I have the data from that. The other thing that is a concern to me is that there is a new issue, and it's saltwater infiltration. I have others, but, you know, this is a new one for me. There's a new task force in Plymouth because they're a coastal community, and they're starting to get saltwater infiltration into their freshwater. And the woman who is, who went for the grant for that said that she was, Wareham is the poster child for this, even more so than Plymouth. Because as water is pumped out of our aquifers and its sea level rise and change in more armoring and development of the coast and probably deforestation, maybe not as much groundwater, this is the current map for 2021. This is Little Farring Hill, whoops, where are we? This is Little Farring Hill, the little really green triangle because it hasn't been degraded. It's got some trails and now it's got some holes from digging and wells, but it hasn't been degraded, so it's a real green triangle. And one, it looks like we might want to preserve, conserve some upland that's a natural scape and contiguous corridor for wildlife because it's getting pretty hard for them. And saltwater infiltrates, the pressure of the freshwater is less and less with the pumping, the droughts, as the sea level is rising and it's pushing at that water, there's, has been a balance between these two forces. So, the river will become more brackish. And I want to mention that Mark Resmussen, at the inauguration of Horseshoe Mill Pond, looked up at Farring Hill with me, you could see the forest, and I said, is that an important watershed for this river? He said it's critical to the health of the Wee Wee Antic River. So, I would last like to read what, you know, the DOE R in 2015 had that guidance policy for Mass General Law for Solar Paragraph 9. And it said, guidance to local decision-makers issued in 2015, quote, strongly discourages the siting of solar energy systems in locations that will require significant tree cutting. This isn't even tree cutting, it's, it's uprooting, destroying a forest and an ecosystem. Maintaining trees assists the Commonwealth's energy policy goals because of the important water management, cooling, and climate benefits trees provide. Moreover, forested natural landscapes also provide habitat for wildlife, recreational opportunities, a sense of place for people. Instead of deforestation for use, for energy use, the Commonwealth encourages siting projects in industrial and commercial districts or on vacant disturbed land. We've heard that so many times. Does anybody know of a solar panel, solar project that hasn't been deforested recently? I don't. And I think that if we don't stop deforesting, we're never going to get there because it's just the easy way to do it, so-called, and there are huge consequences. And I want to say that, this is last comment, very short. It was Horstley Witten, Mr. Price's company, that wrote the DOE R guidance for that Mass General Law and said, siting of solar energy that would require significant tree cutting is strongly discouraged. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Eric Lentola, 15 Squirrel Island Road. Thank you for that report, Mr. Price. That enlightened, I think, a lot of us as to what we were trying to read, and there are some interesting facts there. I did, it does bother me a little bit, I know we talked just briefly, that projects he's worked on that are similar to solar fields, but this is the first solar field. It's, I think it's a lot different thinking about the flow of water coming across all hundreds of panels on a hill. That's a different, that's a little bit of a different issue. Charlie brought up an interesting point. It would have been interesting, it has some test wells across the street. I live behind those people, and early on, like Annie had mentioned, there was a couple of residents from Squirrel Island. All that water flows down. I have issues behind my, I see that water flow, and my grass is like a lake then. And supposedly, this will not change other than it is. The problems we have will probably still persist, but they're not going to get worse. I'm a little bit worried about that. Hypothetically, if I'd, there's an empty lawn on Farring Hill, if I was considering to build a home there, and if I had talked to the neighbors, if I had gotten this kind of information, came to this just to see the issue, and I wouldn't build no house there. I'm still very skeptical about what's going to happen with that water coming down that hill. I'd written a little bit before, which I did submit, and it still pertains to this just a little bit here. This hydrogeologic report still shows concerns in relation to water issues with the Farring Hill Solar Project. As he stated, it's not 100%. We're pretty sure of all the statistics, all the charts. We're not quite that sure, though. Even with the solar company's proposed changes, it will not replace or change the fact that what we will, what will be lost will be good, will be gone for good. The natural environment in this particular location protects not only itself, but the neighboring watershed, endangered animal, plant species, our drinking water, area residents, et cetera. The solar field will protect none of this. This will all, this all will be replaced by a sea of plastic and metal. It will have a lifespan of 20 years, and what will be left behind, but nothing more than an open scar on the landscape, and it will remind us of what was once there. The natural environment that is there now took thousands of generations to create. We need to pay attention to that thing right now and leave it alone.
Thank you, sir. No tripping. Do we have anybody online that would like to weigh in?
Not so far.
Nothing. Is there any questions or comments from the board?
I guess maybe a couple of comments. One is, I'm interested in the monitoring that Neil mentioned, that would, assuming the project goes forward, give some indication of whether the safeguards were working and whether some additional steps needed to be taken. So, that's one point. Second point is, I'm also interested in the point that Charlie made about how much we know about the septic systems and wells and whether, whether they are properly accounted for in this study, and whether there's additional work that we should do to make sure that we're doing no harm here going forward. So, I would ask for a consideration of those thoughts as we go forward, not necessarily right at this moment.
Thank you. Jane?
Well, and we have a pretty good enumeration of the lots that are closest to the subject property, and at least an enumeration and some assessment of the types of wells at those houses, I think, is in order. And I would like to know if there are any suggestions for mitigating structural approaches that could be taken to deal with the dryness of the land and erosion issues that might occur in the period from the beginning of construction or demolition through establishment of that meadow. I don't, I don't know who might suggest that, but.
Maybe one other thought as well. The houses are very close. It's, I know there's a buffer there of 50 feet. That seems awfully close to me. And I would ask us to think about whether, whether an increased buffer might be.
Stronger buffer?
Yes.
Sam? Carl? Seeing no other questions or hands on, you again?
Yeah, me again.
Mr. Buckland?
I wanted to ask of Mr. Price, were any of the existing monitoring wells that were installed out there, would they be appropriate, or could you make recommendations as to which ones would be used for long-term monitoring at the site?
Yeah.
Yes, you're going to have to come up.
I haven't actually looked at the map to address that, but I think there, the one, there is one that's quite close to the detention basin on the southwest side, that if it survives, construction could be used. But certainly, you know, installing new wells, either there or at the other side, is not a big deal, and wouldn't be unreasonable to include as a condition.
Another question. The recharge area to the individual wells of the homeowners along there, would there be any interaction between the changes in the groundwater and the recharge?
Not significant.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one other question while I was taking notes. So, you had mentioned during your presentation that there was, there was that one spot, you noted the water table at 32 inches. Where was that?
We do have that figure, that map that shows the.
I'm curious where it is in relation to the homes that are along that southern border?
The shallowest were on that southwest side, closest to all those homes that.
Okay. So, at 32 inches, that's.
The shallowest were 20, 20 inches.
20 inches, which is pretty shallow.
Yeah. You wouldn't, you couldn't build a.
You couldn't build a house there today if you wanted to. All right, so, and by your own account, these changes will exasperate that number slightly, not a ton, but it will, it will make it worse than it is.
Correct.
So, how does that interact? If you've got a home who's in that area, and we'll give you the benefit of the doubt, we'll take the 20 out, we'll use the 32 inches. So, they have a well, they've got a private well, they've got a private septic system, and they got a rising water table at 32 inches, soon to be possibly 30 and a, 31 and a half inches. How does that rising water table affect their septic system and their well?
I don't think there's any significant impact to the well. If anything, you know, there's a little more water for the well, it's beneficial.
So, it's not going to have an adverse effect on the way the septic system operates?
No, this is the, so the septic system is a different story, right?
But if, if the water in the well comes from the same ground that the septic system is lying in, there's no opportunity for that water to transfer unwanted?
Oh, you're, I think you're asking if the, if the flow, if there's a chance that more water would move from the septic system.
Towards the well, yes.
I don't think the overall pattern of groundwater flow in terms of directions should not change as a result. We're just, we're talking about a slight raising of the whole plane without changing the permutations thereof, if that makes sense.
Okay. But there, is there, I'm just trying to think, I mean, you know, a leaching field for a septic system is three feet, roughly?
I mean, that's, that is the one thing, right? I mean, likely, many, some, any of these septic systems are not actually compliant with Title V.
Right.
Or maybe are barely so. So, it's, it's an open question that really can't be resolved with modeling whether, you know, an inch is enough to make a system that's currently compliant, not.
Not so much compliant, but maybe functioning?
Yeah, probably, the function wouldn't make any, I mean, that amount of difference is not going to affect the function. To be honest, a septic system that is barely compliant with Title V is not doing all as much as I would like it to do anyway.
Well, yeah.
So, an inch of difference is not going to make.
The reality is, Wareham's a fairly established town. I'm sure there's more than a fair share amount of septic systems that are barely functioning.
Right.
My concern is, is if the water table rises, does it just make a. I'm sure there's more than a fair share amount of septic systems that are barely functioning.
Right.
My concern is, is if the water table rises, does it just make a tenable situation worse?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's much in the way of a functional change. There's a potential very minor regulatory change, but not a functional change.
Okay, thank you.
Chair?
Sure.
Just following along on that. It certainly would depend on the septic system, as Mr. Price has suggested, because one that is barely functioning now probably is very close to whatever the groundwater table is, as many of them were put in the groundwater table 50, 60, 75 years ago. But starting in the 1970s, when the Title V code was revised, there was a minimum four-foot separation from the high groundwater to the bottom of the system. Then it went to five, when they modified it again, with an adjustment for a reconstruction, which allows you to get a little bit, a little bit closer. But you're really talking about dramatic changes in the water table to affect any recently developed septic system, even in the last, I would say, 25 or 30 years.
Right. And I'm not familiar with the age of those homes. Are they...
There are some that have been around there for a while, and then there are some that are relatively new.
Yeah, okay.
The ones that are on the westerly side of the railroad bed, the old railroad bed, the upper portion of White Pine Acres, that was developed in the 1970s with homes being added over a period of time. Some of the lots were consolidated. That portion of it, which backs up against the bank and up where the railroad bed is, that's some tough soil in there. I've done some investigation myself over the years and was actually involved in the subdivision of that property back around 1971, so I know what it was like. But it depends on the age, depends on whether the system's been rebuilt and compliant with Title V. So I don't know that you can make a real blanket statement about the impact of this project on that type of thing. As far as wells are concerned and pulling, say, effluent into a well, I think you'd have to have a pretty powerful drawdown on the well to get that to take place, because it, it's like a, it ends up like the end of a trumpet.
Yeah, like siphons.
Where the water goes down like this toward the pickup point with a well, that, I think, is probably pretty highly, unlikely that that would happen. But I think it is important that we know a little bit more about what's happening on that level plain once you get, if the highest groundwater, as Mr. Price has said, is in that little southwest corner where the soil conditions were the best, and yet it was within that farther surface, that concerns me a bit. And I will certainly be taking a looking at the stormwater calcs and what the bottom elevation is of that basin that's in that, now in that southwest corner. I realize they pulled it back and maybe they raised it up, but we want to see separation between the bottom of that infiltration basin and that high groundwater to be sure that there is some means of allowing that water to infiltrate vertically. But while at the same time it's going vertically downward, there's a certain amount from the groundwater that's going, capital our action, this way. So it's not just a nice, flat plain where all of a sudden you hit groundwater and everything else above it is dry. Doesn't work quite that way. So I'll be taking a look at that kind of thing, and depending on what I find, I'll be making comments or suggestions for you.
Very good, thank you.
I should point out, I did at the beginning, that we did not address those kind of, you know, conformity with the regs that, that, so that, I can't, you should definitely do that. It's important, because I did not do that, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. No more questions, comments? You have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Whoever is joining us online, please keep in mind the statement that we've made that if, if you have something new to bring to us, please do that. If you're just going to revisit information that's already been presented, that we respectfully request that you don't do that.
Hi, this is Leslie Edwards Davis, Precinct One. It was my understanding that I would be able to share my screen and show a brief video that I had compiled with Annie Hayes. And the reason I think it's relevant is a visual of the area when it's experiencing a downpour, a torrential downpour, is very revealing in a way that these documents might not necessarily be impactful right away, and I would like to be able to show it. Is that a possibility?
It's my understanding, I've seen the video myself, and it's my understanding it's posted to the website as a document that can be viewed, is that correct?
Um, I don't know if I can answer that.
No, I'm, that's directing that toward Ken Buckland or Monique. I was saying, we...
It was distributed to the planning board by mail, and I've watched the video. It's the eight-minute video, right? I do not desire to watch it again tonight.
I would say, I, I've seen it myself. Jerry, have you seen it?
I have not, but I will find the email and I will view it.
Okay. Jane?
I've seen it.
Jane's seen it, so I, I don't think, as far as presenting it to the planning board, I don't think there's any real value in that, as most of us have seen it, and the one person that hasn't seen it has made comment that she will seek it out and review it. So I, I would say that, that we would not entertain showing that tonight.
Okay, thank you for considering. I would urge everyone to, to view it before the vote. What the neighbors who live there see on a day-to-day basis is what they've tried to convey through that video. And if you aren't there on a day-to-day basis seeing the, the changing effects of weather, I really think it's an important component in the information that you're reviewing.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayes? Sure? Keep her to...
If, Annie Hayes, 52 Farmers Lane. When I went out and took the video, it was right after, not a torrential rain, but a good rain, and it was an hour or so after. And it shows Ferring Hill watershed, which I wanted the public to see.
Okay, well, I...
We wanted the public to see.
I'm not quite sure, honestly, what the value in that's going to be, Annie, only because the matter before us is, is up for discussion and a vote by the board. We're the ones that are reviewing the information. We can certainly make sure that it is up on the website for the public to view with all the other documents, but as far as tonight is concerned, I don't see the value in it.
Well, you're the final word. I acknowledge that. So I do think it's important, it's a public hearing, and the public comes to speak to the people who are on Zoom as well. So I think that's, I would disagree, but it is your say. And I also would like to, and I'm working on this still, but the public comments are still not in one place, and some of them are in the, the, what is it called? The discontinued project, so nobody, the withdrawn project, so who would go to see that there? So I, I keep working on trying to get them so that people know where they are, three, three different places. And I had one statement for Mr. Shanahan. Con Edison has resubmitted panels, changing from the, the, the one that being is with L, the Longi to Jinko Solar, which not only is equally implicated in the Uyghur detention labor camps, it is, it is coded with doubt.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that...
Excuse me? No, but, no, but we're getting there.
I, I understand, but I think what you're trying to tie together is, is something that's going on in another country concerning manufacturing, and if the United States had an issue with it, they wouldn't be allowed to be imported into the country.
They do have an issue, and there is a law that, that went into effect June 21st.
Okay. That's June 21st of this year?
Yes.
So like, three days ago, four days ago?
Yeah, just recently.
Okay.
Yeah, it was very surprising.
Okay.
So that says that we can't import those panels, is that what you're saying?
Well, the supply chain has to be verified, it has to be investigated now.
But there's, but there's, there's, there's no current embargo against these panels coming into the country.
The tariff is, the tariff is different from the embargo.
I think, I think you're trying to bring something into the conversation that you don't have solid backup for, so I'm going to request that you...
Well, that's what I submitted information.
Not only that, but it's not within our purview.
Right.
It's not in our bylaws if, we can't rule on that. We can't do anything with it.
Can I discount that and get to the PFAS issue, however?
No, I, I think the PFAS issue has been submitted via documents.
Okay, the Jinko also has PFAS coding on it.
Thank you.
It does not...
That's, that's...
We have two, we'll have to weigh the two competing documents and decide.
Right. And we have, we have the information. All right. Before this train goes too far off the rails, I'm going to take a motion that we continue the public hearing.
Until what?
Until, I don't have mine.
Charlie, when do you think you'll have your report done?
You've got a meeting in two weeks. It'll be done for two weeks.
Okay, and when, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant, when do you think you'll be presenting to the Conservation Commission? I don't think there's any point in us reconvening until after the Conservation Commission. That's the, Charlie's report and the Concom report are the remaining...
If I may approach, Mr. Chairman.
But we have to negotiate continuance with him anyways.
Right.
We reached out to Mr. Pichette earlier this week and said that things appear to be coming to a head, and asking when we can next meet with the Conservation Commission. I also think Mr. Rowley is expecting a revised site plan in accordance with the report you heard tonight.
I think I have that, it was delivered, I think, the other day, Mr. Shanahan.
You've already got it. So I don't know when we'll be in front of Conservation Commission next, but I would hope we can continue with the planning board proceedings.
Well, I, to Kyle's point, until you meet with Concom, I don't think there's much sense in us sitting back down again.
Even to consider Mr. Rowley's report?
Well, that's, I think that's going to create not only a meeting to talk about his report, but if you haven't gotten any input from Concom, now we're just creating another, another meeting.
We'll, we'll do with that one.
Is this scheduled on the line?
Uh, Concom?
Was what, the 11th and 25th? 11th and 25th, right?
Yeah. And you can't look at the...
It's Wednesday.
On Wednesdays.
Wednesday, so this would be the third, I'm sorry, they just, exactly. So the next meeting for Conservation would be on the 20th. So I, I had a conversation with Dave, and he mentioned the Conservation Commission, well, that he would be listening into this meeting.
Right.
And kind of doing some reporting back and...
So there's a possibility we could be ready for the 25th?
Correct.
I'll try to get to the Conservation Commission before then.
It's on the agenda, but it doesn't, gets continued.
So, yeah, I would suggest, as long as it's agreeable with you, that we continue the, the public hearing until the 25th.
Whatever works for the board, Mr. Chairman.
Because I think if... No, next one's the 11th. Right, right, that's what I'm saying, there's, there's no sense in meeting before he goes to Concom, and if they're going to meet on the 20th, that puts it at the 25th, which is perfect. They don't think they can move that fast?
I think, if anything, I can get a memo from Dave, if that's sufficient.
No, it's very specific in 1551, what the requirements...
Okay.
The requirement is very specific in the bylaw 1551, what we need from Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Shanahan a question about that?
Certainly.
Do you propose to file an NOI or a request for determination?
You filed an NOI at the beginning of all of these proceedings.
Oh, and they've just been waiting on it?
The Conservation Commission's position was, we're not acting until the planning board acts. Mr. Schultz is 100% correct in what the bylaw provides.
Okay, so... So your NOI has been in the hands, that's all I needed to know, thanks.
Okay. All right, so, so the 25th then is agreeable?
Chairman.
So we'll need that in ready?
So I move that we continue the Ferring, 1222 91101 Ferring Hill Road to July 25th.
Second?
I'm okay with that, if that's okay.
Okay. So we have a motion by Carl Schultz, a second by Sam Corbett. All those in favor of continuing the public meeting, public hearing until 7:25?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye 500. So we will continue public until, public hearing until 25.
Can I ask, can I ask a question, Ms. Chair? It seems like there is no process for the planning board and Concom to get together. On a, you see it first, we see it first, we'll give you a report by. It seems like in a lot of occasions, we're waiting for them, they're waiting for us, and there's no way of knowing when we're going to get a report from either party.
I wonder if we could, can we informally do something with Dave to kind of work out a sequence of events?
Yes, we can, since he works in my office.
Well, that's what I was thinking. I'm going to, I'm going to turn Monique loose on him and, and say, this is what I want, and if you don't give it to us...
I think, I think...
I can look at the meeting minutes from our August meetings of last year where we discussed this very closely.
I, I remember the subject.
I think one of the things we should do is think about a change in the, in the bylaws too, so there's not this double jeopardy.
I think we discussed that as well.
Yes.
Well, we're looking at 15, Article 15.
Yeah, we are.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll stop in and see Dave one day this week, or next week, actually, their week's over. Okay. Public comment on the master plan?
I, I think that there's a lot of changes going on, and perhaps at some point, when we get our head above water, we, we need to step back and re, look at it. I think we've got plenty of work on our table right now to fix subdivision, Article 14, 15, Article 6. But I do think we might want to look at the, the master plan, but perhaps not until we get through the bylaw updates.
Okay, that sounds good.
Do think, for, I'm sorry, I'm continuing.
No, that's all right.
We, we know that there's been a lot of comment about emerging energy issues. Our master plan doesn't clearly communicate to our citizens how we, how we foresee those changing energy, condition, not conditions, but technologies, how about that? How we see that flowing into our community. Also, our current master plan was developed at a time where cranberry growing was a productive enterprise. I'm not sure that, that the growers see it that way, at least on a large scale anymore. And I don't, I don't know, Mr. Buckland, I know that Makepeace is reviewing how they're going to use large, vast swaths of property in town. We, I don't know if the master plan is a way to articulate what we see the impacts of that, and then a renewed commitment to the district downtown. Those are things that I think we can beef up in the master plan.
That's certainly the case if the board wants to proceed on that, that angle.
We can meet every night of the week.
Oh, that's why I said, there's, there's a ton of work to do. I do know that the master plan should be signaling to the community and to us where we see...
Where we see Wareham going?
Going, and, and I know Jane worked extensively on that, so I think she could take the lead on rewriting.
Well done.
Nicely played, Mr. Schultz.
No, but I think it's something we need to continue to pay attention to, but I don't know that in the short term, that we have cycles to do much.
Agreed. Planning board liaison updates. I, I could speak to Serp Ed, but I will be the first to admit I have been negligent in attending, so I, I cannot offer an update.
CPC meets next Wednesday. We have a reorganization in place. We have two current members that are leaving, a new member that's been appointed, so we're kind of going through reorganization as we speak. Capital Planning hasn't met for a while.
as we speak. Capital planning hasn't met for a while. We should be getting together in about three weeks.
All right. Mr. Schultz?
The Solar Bylaw Committee is, I don't know if defunct is the right word, but we're...
Finished with their work?
We did, we submitted the bylaw. I, I think we're just hopefully waiting for the Attorney General to provide feedback. And based on that feedback, the town will have to decide what to do next. I know that there is a, a group of us talking about renewable energy. Park could probably speak to that better.
There was a presentation made to the selectmen, probably about a month ago or so, suggesting formation of a renewable energy committee. And the selectmen asked for the group to come back. I went back with the group at that point, and we talked a little bit, and the selectmen said, come back with a mission statement, and you're likely to get a positive vote. So we're working on a mission statement. Carl is joining in as well. And I think we'll be looking at some of the issues that Carl highlighted, and seeing if we can provide some information to the town about where they might seek to go on renewable energy and the related topics.
I hear Jane's got plenty of free time to mention. Sorry.
I'm climbing under the table in a moment.
Okay. Board member comments? I think we've commented a little in daylights out of everything tonight. So with that, I would, oh, staff report. I'm happy to report that Sherri has been appointed to the board officially.
Really?
Associate.
Oh, reappointed.
As an associate.
Okay, okay.
But we, we reeled her in for a little bit longer term. And...
I thought someone was...
Mr. Schultz has been reappointed, even in abstentia, you could not avoid it. And the, the board thanks you both for your commitment. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason. Sherri?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you all very much.